The United States of America, and to the Republic which is sanctified, one nation, under God, indivisible, in every and justice for all.
I'd ask Councilor Townsend to give the indication, please.
I will. We pray with him, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this glorious state that you've given us and the opportunity to come take care of the business of our county. Please help us to be able to keep you foremost in our thoughts as we do what's best for our county and for our community, Lord. Please bless those who are here and those who are not present, Lord. Keep you foremost in our thoughts, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Number four, approval of agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Do you have a hand to add something?
Mr. Chair, I would like to amend the executive session to include a personal mail matter with a contractual legal matter that we already have on the agenda.
We got a motion, can we get it said to the meeting of agenda?
I say.
All in favor? Number five, approval of minutes from July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, August sixth, twenty-twenty-four, and August eighth, twenty-twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for a correction to the minutes of August sixth, where we took a vote to go declare a state of emergency. It says that Mr. Cowherd and myself abstained. I voted yes, because you couldn't hear me or I was spoken over, but I'd like for the record to reflect that I did vote for abstaining. The county.
To read that, I voted for two. I asked the call back. Make a motion to add the amended changes to the agenda for the August eighth meeting? August eighth or August sixth?
August sixth, and I would just ask that they be approved as amended.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the amendments to the agenda for August sixth. Make a motion.
Second.
Ordinance number twenty-four dot zero-nine, third reading, public hearing. An ordinance given by authorizer pursuant to Title twelve, Chapter four, of the Code of Laws of South Carolina nineteen seventy-six, as amended. The execution and delivery of a fee and rule of a lower on taxes and special source agreement created agreement by in between Dillon County, South Carolina, and Melsom Soul LLC in any sponsor affiliates with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payment in lieu of taxes, revocation of that certain fee of added valorant taxes and special sources. Revenue credit agreement by in between Dillon County, South Carolina, and Melsom Soul LLC dated as of November sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, and number three, other matters related thereof. There's a.
Madam Chair, we have nobody signed up to speak on all the documents.
Number seven.
No, we've got another.
Ordinance number twenty-four twelve, third reading, public hearing. Authorizing the issuance and sale of not exceeding two million general obligation bond, Series twenty-twenty-four of Dillon County, South Carolina. Fixing the form and details of the bond provided for the payment of the bond. Authorizing the chairman or the county council and county administrator to determine certain matters relating to the bond, providing the payment of the bond, the deposition of the proceeds of the bond, and other matters relating thereto.
Madam Chair, we have no one signed up to speak on that element, sir.
Make a motion to those above the chair.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? You opposed? Ordinance number twenty-four dot zero-nine, third reading. An ordinance given by authorizer pursuant to Title twelve, Chapter four, of the Code of Laws of South Carolina nineteen seventy-six, as amended. The execution and delivery of the fee and rule of added valorant taxes and special source revenue credit agreement by in between Dillon County, South Carolina, and Melsom Soul LLC in any sponsor affiliates with respect to certain economic development property in this county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, revocation of that certain fee of added valorant taxes and special source revenue credit agreement by in between Dillon County, South Carolina, and Melsom Soul LLC dated as of November sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, and other matters related thereto. Requires motion.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor? Number nine. Ordinance number twenty-four twelve, third reading. Authorizing the issuance and sale of not exceeding two million certain obligation bonds, Series twenty-twenty-four of Dillon County, South Carolina. Fixing the form and details of the bond provided for the payment of the bond. Authorizing the chairman of the county council and county administrator to determine certain matters relating to the bond, providing the payment of the bond, the deposition of the proceeds of the bond, and other matters relating thereto. Requires motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
I don't have a discussion on this. Mr. Minister, if you probably can, or Mr. Boone, once we get this bond, we say some of those are for curable, like vehicle, tractor, whatever you want to buy, that'll have to be brought back before the council votes on it. That's one thing, that's all I have.
All in favor? Resolution number ten. Resolution number twenty-four thirteen. A resolution acknowledging the service of public safety telecommunications officer and its first response in Dillon County, South Carolina, and other matters relating thereto.
Madam Chair, each of you have a copy of that resolution. This is just recognizing our public safety telecommunications as part of the critical infrastructure of the public safety system, and our train is certified as telecommunications officers pursuant to the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. I'd like to make that, present that to y'all for approval.
Requires motion?
I'll make a motion if we pass that.
Second. All in favor? Number eleven, in consideration of this.
First, we have the sports report. Councilor Boone, put the bill. Next, we have a voice committee, and we are, because we're doing this, to continue to impact on the lives of young individuals, and they're donating one hundred dollars.
One hundred dollars. I'll do a hundred, I'm sorry.
Next, we have the Dillon Elementary School. For their students in four K to third grade, they're asking for funds to assist their music program. Five thousand, they need one hundred dollars.
I'll do two.
Okay, okay, here you go, do it, sir.
Four K music program. Can you hear me now?
Good.
Okay. The four K music program, they're asking for donations.
I hear a fifth, sir.
Um, boys to me, their, um, next one was here, dude. They're asking for donation. Um, if you want to donate to that, and also, it's a personal group. So that was the sports report.
He didn't hear that.
I hear a fifth, sir.
Do you want to do anything to boys to me? Boys to me, the next one, dude.
Yeah.
He said he want to get a hundred to boys to me. So that was all for the course. And next, we have V H, we have V H W.
V H W.
And then, September twenty-seventh, they're hosting a model golf tournament at the City of Dillon. By Old Johnson Memorial Golf Course. And the funds raised will directly support the local veterans and their families. Robbie is donating one hundred dollars.
I do one.
Fifty, I'm sure.
The V H W.
I do a fifth, sir.
And I get fifty, I'll send it. Next, we have the ladder athlete booster club, and they're doing a golf tournament too. You can purchase a ad. The ads run from seventy-five dollars to two hundred dollars. And you can go higher, from two fifty to one thousand dollars for business membership, membership rate.
I get twenty-five, bro.
Next, we have the Main Street Methodist Church of Dillon. They're hosting a golf tournament to be held September twentieth at the City of Dillon by Old Johnson. Vivian Johnson Memorial Golf Course. And all funds will stay in Dillon County to benefit citizens. That's the Main Street on Methodist Church. Robbie's gonna make the hundred dollars.
I do one.
I do one.
Next, we have the Main Street Methodist Church of Dillon. They're hosting a golf tournament to be held September twentieth at the City of Dillon by Old Johnson. Vivian Johnson Memorial Golf Course. And all funds will stay in Dillon County to benefit citizens. That's the Main Street on Methodist Church. Robbie's gonna make the hundred dollars.
I do one.
I do one.
Next, we have the Main Street Methodist Church of Dillon. They're hosting a golf tournament to be held September twentieth at the City of Dillon by Old Johnson. Vivian Johnson Memorial Golf Course. And all funds will stay in Dillon County to benefit citizens. That's the Main Street on Methodist Church. Robbie's gonna make the hundred dollars.
I do one.
I do one.
Next, we have the Chamber of Commerce. And they're, they will be having a golf course that we're gonna have something at the City of Dillon. Vivian Johnson Memorial Golf Course, Phoenix, Tennessee. This is for Dillon Chamber.
You should put me out of my brain by two more.
Next, we have the Dillon Middle School Course.
I do one.
Next, we have the Dillon Middle School Course.
I do one.
Next, we have the Dillon Middle School Course. Steve is giving a hundred dollars.
Middle School Course?
Yeah.
I get one.
You get fifty, bro.
Steve told me to give a hundred today. I'll break it to you, bro. One more thing, yourself. Turn your around, probably yesterday, talking about this, you know, lady, you got flooded out. Tiffany Christian, with the three dollar general fund, David, you got four kids. And I thought the county didn't have any kind of full respect. Me, as a regular race, that we might get something. So I'm gonna give two hundred dollars, and I'll put them both in.
That has to be, that has to come out of your money. You can't use that money.
Can't use our county money.
Can't use county's money for that.
Well, that mine.
If he's doing it himself, that's fine, but because they're not a five oh one C three or anything, you cannot do it. Now, if there was an organization doing something, then they'd do it.
So if they hit an organization, they could give it out.
There'd be someone to have to look at.
They might do it out.
Mr. Cowherd's giving it individually.
Yeah, he is giving it individually.
Not public money.
Right.
Well, sit in the round when he's.
Yeah, I take it.
Okay, well, that's all.
Requires motion to approve the reflection, please?
Make a motion to approve the reflection.
Second. All in favor? Okay, number twelve, Deborah Horace's Saccharine State University.
Good evening. I want to give you all just a overview of who I am as far as representing South Carolina University State Extension Office. State University program, my name is Deborah Horace, and I am the regional director for South Carolina State University Extension and South Carolina State University Extension Office. The one in this region, which we consider the PD region, is located in Marver County, in Davisville, South Carolina. We're soon to be relocated to Florence, South Carolina, probably by the end of this year. But I want to take this opportunity, and thank you for giving the opportunity to just kind of share with you who we are and a little bit about what we do, because we have been doing programming in Dillon County, as some of you may be aware of, and some of you may not be aware of. So basically, the South Carolina State Extension Services, their vision is to advance resource capacity through integrated programming and teaching, research, and public service with successful partnerships, and effective community and stakeholders engagement. The counties that make up the PD region are Chesterfield, Dillon, Florence, Ori, Marion, and Marver County. In the front of your packet, I have a presentation of fourteen people. Right now, currently in our office, we have three employees. We have myself, we have a regional director, and I have two agents, one for family nutritional health, and one for four H and youth development. We are currently in search of an administrative admin, and our farm agent, as well as a community economic development agent, and we're looking for someone to possibly do community economic development as far as being in the region all the time, and then the county agent will do three pieces of the region. But basically, we're charged to serve all the counties that we have in front of us. And we're trying to do our best. Like I said, we have three people, so we do our best. Basically, I just want to tell you the overview of the areas that we do cover. So we have five program areas. Four H Youth Development, Family Nutrition and Health, Educational Innovations and Support. I'll explain that a little bit further. Educational Innovations Support is about getting our youth college ready. We do have a program not in Dillon County at the time, but I think I got another county I could add this year, but we do have a program that we call High Health and Youth Pursuit Excellence, and we meet with them monthly, or sometime by weekly. We have an agent within the school system that speaks with them about financial aid. We try to talk to the parents about how we can help to get the kids ready for financial aid, as well as we do college tours. Last year, we took the kids to Williamsburg, we took them to Georgia State, Georgia Tech, excuse me, Georgia State, yeah, Georgia Tech, and Morris Brown. And we also went to Morris College. This year, we're planning on a new one. Our year begins in September, so we haven't gotten a makeshift everything, but we will be doing that. Our community economic development is too full. It's about economic development within the community, as well as, when I say general economic development, as far as organizations like nonprofits that we're trying to support in the area of technical assistance, as well as for small businesses. And last but not least, one is, which is our foundation, because we're an agriculture school, is our sustainable agriculture and natural resources environment. With that, we support farmers. Our target is low income or great needs that farmers may have. We have just started the program by the USDA, helping ourselves and partner with it, and we have this thing called Climate Smart. And the USDA has funded for us to have a power to teach farmers how to do sustainable agriculture. And that has been a task for the last year, because we're trying to get them to hopefully understand about how the practices that it can do to affect the environment, or not affect the environment in this case. In general, I really want to just kind of let you know that we are present in the community. We are seeking partnership within the community, with council, as well as other organizational agencies. And I may be knocking on your door or calling you, but I do have some highlights in your package of what we have done. One in particular that has been a great success is we had civic engagement camp this year. And civic engagement camp was giving youth ages fourteen to about eighteen, to teach kids about civic engagement, understanding their responsibility within the community. We had some of the council members come and speak to our students, as well as our local representatives, and the local representatives as well as our center. And we really want to ignite them to understand the importance of voting and making good decisions about voting. We're not trying to teach them, who vote for it, that's not our warehouse. Our warehouse is making sure that they're the most productive citizens whenever they come into adulthood. And with that, we're going to transition the group that we work with here, as well as we're giving it forward to counties, we're going to transition them into a four H club, which we will teach other things aside from civic engagement, but that will be one of the focuses that we had this year since it wasn't election year. And I think that's about it. Don't have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. What you do?
Thank you. And thank you for having me, Bill.
Number thirteen, hail Paige Lutz, Weston.
Madam Chair, we got our Paige Lutz and Lucas Hernandez, who's with the Weston Sampson Perm. Some of y'all may remember years ago, several years ago, when the stormwater program was approved, we were in position now that we're moving forward, we're going to have a public meeting, they'll talk about that coming up before work can get started. So Paige, then we're, I don't know what kind of speed y'all going on the interstate to get down here, but you had to be moving, I'm sure.
Yeah. Apologize for my tardiness. We came up from Charleston, so I'd hope to be here before the meeting started, but there's a lot of interstate between here and there. So I'm Paige Lutz, I'm the project manager of this professional engineer at Weston Sampson in Charleston. We're really grateful to be on this project. Just to give you a little bit of background, this, the project area we're going to talk about is the Riverdale community, and this area was identified originally in a master plan that was completed in two thousand twenty-two, that looked at some of the stormwater in the area. Obviously, I'm sure y'all are well aware that there are some flooding issues in town, in both the county and the city. So those areas that were identified in the plan that Lucas is going to talk you through some of the technical aspects of, we, they were identified in that master plan, and then they were eligible for CBD GMIT funding. And the funding at the federal level ended up coming down through SCORE, the South Carolina Office of Resilience. And we are working with SCORE and Dillon County and the City of Dillon to hopefully improve some of the flooding in the area. So I'm going to hand it over to Lucas to kind of talk you through some of the details and what you'll see with these projects coming up.
Well, Lucas is going to just to make you aware, this is only for the project that is outside the city limits of Dillon. There is a project, big project going on, bigger than this inside the city limits.
Correct.
So as I walk through, I'll just tell y'all with page I'm on, so you can follow through with me, I guess, that'll probably be the easiest way to go. But right now, I'm on the project focus area page. And what we're looking at here is the two focus areas. So there are, there's Riverdale North and Riverdale South. Those were the two project areas that we were investigating as part of this study. Moving on to the historic imagery for Riverdale North. These are just some things that we wanted to point out. As we were conducting the analysis, we went in, pulled some initial information on elevations and imagery, we're just trying to get a sense of what drainage looked like in this area. So one of the things that we noticed almost immediately, and that you can see sort of later on in the document, I'll point out as well, is there is a big red blob on your image there, and you're looking at historic imagery. So the image on your left is Riverdale North in two thousand, is it two thousand eleven? Perfect. Two thousand eleven. And then the image on your right is in twenty eighteen. So there was a massive clearing that had taken place in that parcel, that we sort of have a feeling that initially there may have been some storage that was in that wetland. There's a wetland in there that the, let me switch to another one till I can explain this a little better. This map here, with the lines on it, that is the drainage in the area. So what you're looking at is a pipe that moves from north, or from north on Sutherland to the south, and then across Smotherman Drive, and then through that, that area we just looked at from the imagery. And you'll notice that even in this image here, some of that vegetation is grown back. So one of our initial thoughts with this project was that that wetland had probably, that wetland and forested area had probably been location where a lot of storage was happening. And so anytime in the future where there was removal of that vegetation, harvesting for lumber, it could have had a significant impact to the hydrology in the area. So moving through these, again, we just wanted to point out that change in historic imagery. Moving through these, on the next page, I have a full list, so I can, I can sort of talk you through this list, but the improvements that were made along the system, we took the original model that was developed by ACOM for both of these areas, an existing stormwater model. We also sent out some folks to get some field survey of some missing information that we had had, and some information we need additional information on. And we went back in and looked at all of the pipes, the relative slopes of the pipes, and then the sizes of the channels that are represented in blue on those images. So you've got pipe to channel essentially running through that whole system, and then a pipe under Smotherman, and then a big channel that goes toward Goings Drive. And at Goings Drive, that channel is then piped underneath PD Church Road. So what we looked at for this area in particular was what could we do to clean out the channels? So we looked at upsizing those channels that are there, and the dimensions for the upsizing are listed on the next page, where we looked at upsizing pipes, upsizing channels. We also looked at the slope of the system, which was another big sort of thing that we had seen. And you can see on the, the image on the next page, which is the flood extent graph, where you can see the flood. So in that image, what I have are flood depths and extents for the existing condition and the proposed condition of the model. And what you'll notice is there's a, in the northern model, there's a big wet spot there that we have now taken care of. So other areas that we saw improvement, and we're also in the original report, we're right at that intersection of Goings Drive and the P church road, and then right at Smotherman. So where we were looking for that improvement to happen, we were able to see it a little more with, with the improvements that we've accomplished.
Are you cleaning west of PD Church Road?
West of PD Church. So that.
Beyond the blue line that you have?
No. It will, it will be clean out to that, that area in particular. And there is, so once you get down past here.
You have positive range, special?
There is positive, but we'll have to look at, there is a pretty sharp bend, so that might be something in the future we want to look at as well. It's a pretty hard right turn that it makes.
I know. That range is pretty severe. That slope, I don't know how you change the slope, it's flat and flat. You can't change it.
Yeah. So that outfalls into the larger area for the river, and that's where you start hitting the wetland, and it's more, even though it's flat, it tends to spread out, because you don't have as many houses and roads there blocking things. So the issues that we were seeing in the model was more on like the northern end of both of the areas, in Riverdale North and South, and by relaying some of the pipes, just because they, after so many years of being in place, they're flowing backwards now, so the water's just not getting out. We didn't really need much upsizing. If we were able to relay most of the pipes and then upsize the outfalls a little bit, we were able to get it to those areas that do have the storage capacity. But right now, most of the storage is happening in people's yards, and so by just, you know, coming in and fixing a few of those pipes and cleaning out the channels that have overgrown, we're able to get the water out into areas where it should be.
A lot of pipe problems, just for information, because one road was built now, and another was built twenty years later, and did not use that same range. So you're going to go over. Yeah, so maybe with that.
That, that makes sense.
Usually you start hitting dishes at the outlet end. I'm sure you realize that.
That drainage is pretty severe, that slope. I don't know how you change the slope, it's flat and flat. You can't change it for some reason.
Yeah, so that outfalls into the larger, um, area for the river. And that's where you start hitting the wetland, and it's more, um, even though it's flat, it tends to spread out, because you don't have as many houses and roads there blocking things. So, um, the issues that we were seeing in the model was more on like the, the northern end of both of the areas, in Riverdale North and South. And by relaying some of the pipes, just because they, after so many years of being in place, they've, they're flowing backwards now. So the water's just not getting out. We didn't really need much upsizing. If we were able to relay most of the pipes and then upsize the outfalls a little bit, we were able to get it to those areas that do have the storage capacity. Um, but right now, most of the storage is happening in people's yards. And so by just, you know, coming in and fixing a few of those pipes, um, and cleaning out the channels that have become overgrown, we're able to get the water out into areas where it should be.
A lot of pipe problems, just for information, because one road was built now, and it was built twenty years later. They did not use that certain drainage at the time.
That, that makes sense.
Usually, you start hitting ditches at the outlet end. I'm sure you realize that. Best reason I put one more. So maybe with that.
That, that makes sense.
Usually, you start hitting ditches at the outlet end. I'm sure you realize that. Best reason I put one more.
Yeah, it makes sense, and some of, like specifically at the north, there's, you can see in the flood map where we've got a good bit of flooding up there by Smotherman that's been removed. And that was because there was, there was some backflow going on. So it looks like a D in the pipes.
I know what you mean.
So, um, moving to Riverdale South, you'll notice something similar. We've got that historic imagery. What we've noticed there is, um, and what we've got boxed in is the main outfall for that system. And in the past, that system was a vegetated channel, open channel, open ditch, um, to a culvert that goes under the road. And in, you know, sometime between, I think that's...
Two thousand eight to two thousand eleven, something?
Yeah, I'd say somewhere there.
Sorry, these are blurry.
Yeah, around two thousand eleven, they ended up actually closing that ditch and piping it. So we don't know, you know, when the decision was made exactly between those timeframes, but that whole system has been closed in instead of being an open channel there. It was originally. And that's what we tried to do also with our solution, was to look at daylighting that stream where possible. So you can see in the, uh, image below, we actually, um, we ended up looking at both of Rosewood Drive, Tupelo Drive. We had run scenarios where we looked at separating the drainage and running, uh, Rosewood all the way down to the outfall that you're seeing there. Um, but found that leaving it disconnected was probably the best way, um, to go about it. We saw that once we were able to upsize the channels in, in this area in particular, and then a few of the pipes along that main stem of the outfall, we were, we were seeing flow move through the system much better. So again, a list of those full improvements are there. Uh, we've got some pretty significant ones here, that include a box culvert that'll go under, uh, the road there. Uh, I believe that's Rosewood Drive where it bends around. That's probably the biggest, um, piece of infrastructure that we've got going in. For the most part, these projects are a lot of channel maintenance, uh, channel widening, and then pipe replacement. So some of these pipes might be in good shape, and we may be able to pick them out and reset them. Some may need to be replaced or repaired. Those are things that we'll probably find during, during construction.
One of the, I know that you're probably wondering how's this gonna affect y'all, how's it gonna affect the people who live in these areas? Um, so just to give you a heads up of what you will see, uh, right now, we're, um, starting to fully develop the designs. Um, so we're probably six months away from being able to bid this to a contractor. And when the contractor gets out there, um, there will be some road construction that you'll see. Um, some, uh, road closures and potentially utility, um, markings and different utilities out there, coordinating how we can hold some, maybe move some. Um, there will be quite a bit of channel clearing in order to facilitate the water moving out a little bit easier. So lots of big equipment out there, um, cutting trees and everything. Um, and, uh, I think the thing I did not put on here is that we will be getting easements for these areas. Currently, none of the drainage system that we've looked at has any easement. Quite a bit of it is in the S C D O T or local road right-of-way. Um, so that is, within the right-of-way, it's protected by that maintenance, but there are some other critical outfalls that are not currently protected by easements. So those property owners do have the right to make changes that may impact the basin and negatively impact their neighbors and the drainage for the system. Um, so hopefully be able to get y'all some easements so that you can maintain this and keep it clear, um, and have a better idea of if there is any development coming in, um, if you're going to change what it looks like right now, that it won't further cause flooding issues in the area. Um, so we're looking at construction probably sometime in the summer and fall. And we do have a public meeting scheduled on October eighth from four to six. Uh, we're developing materials for that, so, um, haven't worked out the location yet, but that is to come as well, if you would like to come here a little bit more information than that.
What was the date of the public...
Uh, October eighth.
Y'all have made our chair day today. That's our district attorney. She's doing all these notes. Doing homework.
All right, well, if y'all have any questions, I really appreciate your time. Thank you for letting us come here and talk to you, and we're excited to get this going.
Thank you. Number fourteen, committee of candidates.
Mrs. Leger?
I'm all right, I've been here this time. Damn. I'll tell him that you're late, okay?
Number fifteen, agreement with CEO Dillon and Talalaki, um, masters.
Madam Chair, we need to table this to our next meeting, because attorney and myself are meeting next afternoon, and lots of corrections, changes need to be made to that agreement.
Number sixteen, executive session. You want to go, you want to make motion for voting?
Yes. I made a motion.
I'm sorry. All in favor? We are going into executive session, where no decisions will be made. We are out of executive session, we are...
No action taken.
No action taken.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask council approval to terminate our existing contract for our, uh, website and, uh, move forward with, going with revised as our new website design.
Madam Chair, I thank you that much.
All in favor? Number seventeen, Dave Simmons. Number seventeen, adjourn, requires a motion.
Make a motion, adjourn.
All in favor?